Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Myers?
I'd like to call for a moment of silence to remember the victims, tragic shooting that happened at Cummins School in Nashville, Tennessee.
All right, I'm gonna move it, uh, the agenda over to the superintendent.
Mr. White, my name is. Tonight's a very special night, uh, in that we honor two of each of our living graduates and, um, certainly exciting event for us, and I hope that this is, I hope that that's showing. Well, I'm hopeful that it was enough.
Dwight Burns, Mr. Lalanage, as principal of Niagara Weefield High School, I certify that Aurora J. Cornelius has fulfilled all requirements set forth by the New York State Education Law and Niagara Weefield District Policy. Aurora is now prepared to receive recognition for the work she has successfully completed.
Awarded by the power vested in me by the Board of Regents of the State of New York and as superintendent of schools, it is my honor to confer upon Aurora Cornelius that I will be feeling high school diploma with all the rights and benefits pertaining under her.
Did you need another one?
Yeah.
We're gonna take a break there in a minute.
We're gonna take about a ten fifteen minute break to refresh ourselves and, um, honor Aurora's or her graduate.
Always.
So.
Anything else? All right, I'll call for a vote then for items one through six and eight through ten. All those in favor of those items, please say aye. Aye. What was your standing? Motion carries. Mr. Myers?
Yeah, I had some people reach out to me regarding the GSA club that went to Williams also for a field trip. Saw it on the news, curious about how students going, and then I noticed that it was on this agenda for a retroactive approval. Kind of curious about that, I asked if it intended to be any information further on, um, kind of the activities that went on there. It's quite a long field trip. I'm sure it'd be a video of a drag show that, um, was presented for the kids in their sixth grade to 12th grade, so anywhere from eleven to maybe eighteen. But most of the minors, it's a present that we're concerned about that. I mean, I get up there. Anything that wanted to comment on that?
Yep.
Like more information to comment?
Happy to. Um, so I think, um, Jason asked a couple of questions earlier. Um, one of them was about permission slip. So for any field trip, uh, that these two would have to provide a permission slip for, um, that. And I don't have a copy of the agenda, but I'm happy to share one with the group, um, before our next meeting.
If you could look into why this was last minute rather than, it was something I know knew of in advance. Um, I just give them a sense of the topic at hand, um, and if you can touch us in different areas that, yeah, you know, this part of the field trips that come our way and that they can probably review.
Yep.
For sure.
So, so I did review the filter, my signatures on the field trip. Um, and I believe fourteen fifteen students, I think, uh, kind of the field trip as far as, um, you know, the, the retroactive that is, I think, everybody on the board knows, we've certainly had, you know, many field trips that if they come in later, there's a event that comes up, we try not to deny our kids an opportunity to attend. So it certainly wouldn't be the, um, first and won't be the last, unless the board says they don't want to do that anymore. But, you know, there's certain have changed for our kids and we try to let them take advantage. Um, but I'll give you the copy of the agenda.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
You gotta remember also that, uh, for when things that are, that we approve retroactive, we super, we do give the superintendent authority to approve them. Um, at the time, uh, before a board meeting, uh, in the reorg meeting, that is one of the items that we have in there.
Yeah, I know, like, well, it's kind of come to meetings, it should be bad. So I'm just curious, like, this one, either sort of grants or?
Well, the other piece is too, it's a club. Um, this isn't like an actual, like, classroom field trip or, you know, the entire school field trip. It's a, it's an after-school club attending to some, something that, um, happened after school. So it's, it's not like part of the normal, I would say the normal, per view of the normal days. This would be just like as if, uh, you know, whenever sports seems going somewhere. Yeah. So. All right. Any other item to discuss from the field trip list? Or then all those in favor of approving item seven, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Yeah, abstaining.
Abstaining. All right. And one percentage. Okay. Personnel items, I call for motion to prove the personnel report as submitted.
Home.
I'll second it. Um, I'll separate item, uh, number two. Anything else to separate or discuss? Um, I think the one thing that's to point out, uh, with number twelve, the coaches and extracurriculars, we are, you know, with coaches being hard to find and, you know, always pushing along, trying to get them. Sometimes things are not always, we, we don't find coaches in a timely manner. I want to say shouldn't say timely manner or when we actually need them. So, um, you know, some coaches, like we have for softball on the agenda today, um, we finally got the person, got it. They went through, they went through the process of the fingerprinting and all the other pieces that need to go with that. And that's why it's now, even though I know that, I think modified sports had already started if I remember correctly and, um, you know, or later. So I know some parents are a little upset because they didn't get their, get information about, uh, who was coaching, but, you know, now we, we have the person. All right then, um, all those in favor of approving item one and then three through twelve, please say aye. Aye. What was your standing? Motion carries. Mr. Myers?
Yeah, I had some people reach out to me regarding the GSA club that went to Williams also for a field trip. Saw it on the news, curious about how students going, and then I noticed that it was on this agenda for a retroactive approval. Um, kind of curious about that, I asked if it intended to be any information, um, further on, um, kind of the activities that went on there. It's quite a long field trip. I'm sure it'd be a video of a drag show that, um, was presented, uh, for the kids in their sixth grade to 12th grade, so anywhere from eleven to maybe eighteen. But most of the minors, it's a present that we're concerned about that. I mean, I get up there. Anything, uh, that wanted to comment on that, or?
Yep.
Like more information to comment?
Happy to. Um, so I think, um, you know, Jason asked a couple of questions earlier. Um, one of them was about permission slip. So for any field trip, uh, that these two would have to provide a permission slip for, um, that. And I don't have a copy of the agenda, but I'm happy to share one with the group, um, before our next meeting.
If, if you could look into why this was last minute rather than, it was something I know knew of in advance. Um, I got, I just gave them a sense of the, the topic at hand, um, and if you can touch us in different areas that, yeah, you know, this part of the field trips that come our way and that they can probably review.
Yep.
For sure.
So, so I did review the filter, my, my signatures on the field trip. Um, and I believe maybe fourteen, fifteen students, I think, uh, kind of the field trip as far as, um, you know, the, the retroactive that is, I think, everybody on the board knows, we've certainly had, you know, many field trips that if they come in later, there's a event that comes up, we try not to deny our kids an opportunity to attend. So it certainly wouldn't be the, um, first and won't be the last, unless the board says they don't want to do that anymore. But, you know, there's certain have changed for our kids and we try to let them take advantage. Um, but I'll give you the copy of the agenda.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
You gotta remember also that, uh, for when things that are, that we approve retroactive, we super, we do give the superintendent authority to approve them. Um, at the time, uh, before a board meeting, uh, in the reorg meeting, that is one of the items that we have in there.
Yeah, I know, like, well, it's kind of come to meetings, it should be bad. So I'm just curious, like, this one, whether it's sort of grants or?
Well, the other piece is too, it's a club. Um, this isn't like an actual, like, classroom field trip or, you know, the entire school field trip. It's a, it's an after-school club attending to some, something that, um, happened after school. So it's, it's not like part of the normal, I would say the normal, per view of the normal days. This would be just like as if, uh, you know, whenever sports seems going somewhere. Yeah. So. All right. Any other item to discuss from the field trip list? Or then all those in favor of approving item seven, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Yeah, abstaining.
Abstaining. All right. And one percentage. Okay. Personnel items, I call for motion to prove the personnel report as submitted.
Home.
I'll second it. Um, I'll separate item, uh, number two. Anything else to separate or discuss? Um, I think the one thing that's to point out, uh, with number twelve, the coaches and extracurriculars, we are, you know, with coaches being hard to find and, you know, always pushing along, trying to get them. Sometimes things are not always, we, we don't find coaches in a timely manner. I want to say shouldn't say timely manner or when we actually need them. So, um, you know, some coaches, like we have for softball on the agenda today, um, we finally got the person, got it. They went through, they went through the process of the fingerprinting and all the other pieces that need to go with that. And that's why it's now, even though I know that, I think modified sports had already started if I remember correctly and, um, you know, or later. So I know some parents are a little upset because they didn't get their, get information about, uh, who was coaching, but, you know, now we, we have the person. All right then, um, all those in favor of approving item one and then three through twelve, please say aye. Aye. What was your standing? Motion carries. Turn over to superintendent.
Thank you very. Thank you very much. Um, at this time, I'd like to, uh, call Mr. White up to the microphone and he's going to introduce, uh, our, our recommendation for the assistant principal position at the high school.
It's my pleasure to introduce Michelle Biorella. Um, so you know, there were more than twenty applicants for this position. And, and throughout the application review process and both rounds of interviews, Michelle consistently rose to number one in each of those situations. Uh, there are many experiences and successes on her resume, but the last sixteen years are most notable at this point where she's been at the charter school for applied technologies. The last four years, she's been the assistant principal there. Prior to that, she was a special education consultant teacher and the assistant director of special education. Uh, she's a graduate of the Ullby University in Canisius College, and with that, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Michelle Biorella.
Yeah, thank you very much. Nice to meet you all.
Uh, I'll call for, I'll call for a vote then. You have points, Michelle Biorella, you are a principal at the high school. All those parents, please say aye.
Aye.
What was your standing? What she carries? Congratulations.
We, we have open mic night if you want to say anything.
Two, two comments before, two comments before. One, um, the word that was used multiple times with the person that I had a chance to speak to, and I know whenever I told Mr. White, um, he had heard the same thing, was glue. Um, they referred to, um, Michelle was the glue in their school. She held everything together. So we're very, very fortunate to have her on board. And the one thing I want to make sure that I let the board know, because I think it's really important, and even for Michelle, is that the person that you're going to be working with, Mr. White, um, whenever I said, you're off tonight, Mr. White, he didn't have, today was his vacation day. There was no way in the world that he wasn't coming to talk about you and, uh, to introduce him, uh, the graduate, uh, to me tonight. So, um, I just want to let everybody know that.
Thank you very much for coming.
Excited to have you. All right, uh, how's the committee?
Hello. So we had a meeting, uh, this evening prior to this meeting to discuss a few, uh, policies that needed updating. And they will be on the agenda for the first reading at the next meeting.
All right, perfect. All right, um, external communications to the board, we have, what is, we have some fundraising for informational items there and our internal claims audit report. The third one that's on there, we all received an email from a investigative reporter about, um, IDA tax breaks and penalty agreements and effects in the school district. Um, I, instead of all of us responding back to them, I believe the, we have the superintendent myself, uh, and the two, at two o'clock, um, time slot that he gave us for Friday to talk with the reporter. If that's okay with all of you, we'll speak in behalf of the board.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Perfect. All right, ex-official student members report.
Right, it's been a hot minutes since I've been here, but, I feel like, um, our musical was, I think we saw that three weeks ago. Now, um, it went off very well. We had really good attendance. Um, all the shows went great, cast party went great. Um, thanks to everybody who came out. Um, very appreciative of the support there. Um, this week, spring break, um, quite a few sports trips going on, um, sports and club trips. The language club is in Puerto Rico right now. Um, and the girls softball team is in Earl Beach and the the boys baseball team is in Florida, but it's neat. So they're having some fun out there. Um, we have twelve weeks of school left, so it's kind of, kind of crazy to believe. We have prom on June second, um, graduation is June twenty second. So those are coming up fast. Um, the Friday before break, March thirty first was our transgender day, the visibility at school. Um, the GSA sold Falcon Fried shirts for everybody to wear, and it was just, it was a fun day. Um, unified bowling, they came in second at sectionals and unified basketball has started. Um, at the high school, we just started, um, student of the month. Um, there's one student for each grade level who showed, um, strong academic performance improvement and character. Um, so for the seniors, we have Joe Fentrazzo, the juniors, Philip Owen, sophomore, Mario Estrangio, and freshman Preston Arnold. So that was great for them. Um, student council is starting a crispy cream sale. It's on our agenda as well as a Falcon yard sale. Those are all, um, end of April, early May. Um, our take a look at teaching club, we have, um, bulletin boards ongoing. Um, this month will be mental health awareness, and then in the high school, we will have in a Falcons find from everywhere working board where students will color in their home country and we'll connect them back to the high school and their different languages around it. So it'll be really cool. And then last but not least, we have our interact club. They're doing the lasagna love again. And Falcon Family Research Center is going to help out with that.
Okay. Any questions written on our, on his report, which is very informative, a lot of stuff going on.
Thank you.
Everything, not, not as impressive though as the ad libbing you did during the, you know, the intermission of the, uh, uh, that was a lot of fun. I guess this, this year's musical was phenomenal with you. I, I wanted to say last meeting because it was right, it brought up right up there, but you guys all did great. It was really, really impressive and everything. So, and, and to thank, thank you, let me be part of it with the, the, the intermission antics that you guys do. All right, um, superintendent's report.
Mr. Samuel stole a little my thunder because at the last meeting, when you were here writing, I, um, complimented that everybody in the musical and, uh, that, uh, the crew, the, the musical performances were fantastic and not just because you're sitting here, your, your performance in the one scene was just outstanding and fun and, um, you, you were great. So nice job, nice job. Um, this past week, I had the opportunity with three of our other staff members to attend, um, the nineteenth annual safe school seminar. Uh, historically, it's been held at UB. Um, this year, it was actually held at Buffalo State University, our SRO, um, and actually one of the other.
I know it's kind of come to meetings. I'm just curious.
Well, the other piece is too, it's a club. This isn't like an actual like classroom field trip or you know, the entire school field trip, let's say. It's an after school club attending to some something that. Happened after school. So it's it's not like part of the normal. I would say the normal per view, the normal days should be just like as if. Uh, you know, whenever sports seems going somewhere. Alright. Any other item to discuss from the field trip list? And then all those in favor of approving item seven, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Alright. And one percentage. Personnel items, a call for motion to prove the personnel report as submitted. I'll second it. Um, I'll separate item uh, number two. Anything else to separate or discuss? Um, I think the one thing that's to point out uh, with number twelve, the coaches and extracurriculars. We are, you know, with coaches being hard to find and you know, always. Pushing along, trying to get them. Sometimes things are not always, we we don't find coaches in a timely manner. I want to say shouldn't say timely manner. When we actually need them, so um, you know, some coaches like we have for softball on the agenda today. Finally got the person got it. They went through the process of the fingerprinting and all the other pieces that need to go with that. And that's why it's now, even though I know that I think modified sports had already started if I remember correctly and. You know, I know some parents are upset because they didn't get their get information about uh, who was coaching, but. You know, now we we have the person. Alright then, um, all those in favor of approving item one and then three through twelve, please say aye. Aye. Post upstanding, motion carries. Turn over to superintendent.
Thank you very. Thank you very much. Um, at this time, I'd like to uh, call Mr. White up to the microphone. And he's going to introduce uh, our our recommendation for the assistant principal position at high school.
It's my pleasure to introduce Michelle Biorella. Um, so you know, there were more than twenty applicants for this position. And and throughout the application review process and both rounds of interviews, Michelle consistently rose to number one in each of those situations. There are many experiences and successes on her resume, but the last sixteen years are most notable at this point. Where she's been at the charter school for applied technologies. The last four years, she's been the assistant principal there. Prior to that, she was a special education consultant teacher and the assistant director of special education. Uh, she's a graduate of the Ullby University in Canisius College, and with that, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Michelle Fiorella.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you.
Uh, I'll call for. All those parents, please say aye.
Aye.
What she carries.
We we have open mic night if you want to.
Two, two comments before, two comments before. One, um, the word that was used multiple times with the person that I had a chance to speak to. And I know whenever I told Mr. White, um, he had heard the same thing was glue. Um, they referred to um, Michelle is the glue in their school. She held everything together. So we're very, very fortunate to have her on board. And the one thing I want to make sure that I let the board know, because I think it's really important. And even for Michelle is that the person that you're going to be working with, Mr. White, um, whenever I said, you're off tonight, Mr. White. He didn't have, today was his vacation day. There was no way in the world that he wasn't coming to talk about you and to introduce him. Uh, the graduate uh, to me tonight, so um, I just want to let everybody know that.
Excited to have you. Alright, uh. How's the committee?
So we had a meeting uh, this evening prior to this meeting to discuss a few uh, policies that needed updating. And they will be on the agenda for the first reading at the next meeting.
Alright, perfect. Alright, um, external communications to the board, we have. We have some fundraising for informational items there and our internal claims audit report. The third one that's on there, we all received an email from a uh, investigative reporter. About um, IDA tax breaks and penalty agreements and effects in the school district. I instead of all of us responding back to them, I believe the we have the superintendent myself uh, and the two at two o'clock. Um, time slot that he gave us for Friday to talk with the reporter. If that's okay with all of you, we'll speak in behalf of the board. Alright, ex official student members report.
Right, it's been a hot minutes since I've been here, but. Um, our musical was, I think we saw that three weeks ago. Now, um, it went off very well. We had really good attendance. Um. All the shows went great, cast party went great. Um, thanks to everybody who came out. Um, very appreciative of the support there. Um, this week, spring break, um, quite a few sports trips going on, um, sports and clubs trips. The language club is in Puerto Rico right now, um, and the girl's softball team is in Earl Beach. And the the boys' baseball team is in Florida, so they're having some fun out there. Um, we have twelve weeks of school left, so it's kind of. Kind of crazy to believe we have prom on June second, um, graduation is June twenty second. So those are coming up fast. Um, the Friday before break, March thirty first was our transgender day visibility at school. Um, the GSA sold uh, Falcon Falcon pride shirts for everybody to wear, and it was just, it was a fun day. Um, unified bowling, they came in second at sectionals and unified basketball has started. Um, at the high school, we just started um, student of the month. Um, there's one student for each grade level. Who showed um, strong academic performance improvement and character. Um, so for the seniors, we have Joe Fentrazzo, the juniors, Philip Owen, sophomore. Mario Estrangio and freshman Preston Arnold, so that was great for them. Um, student council is starting a crispy cream sale on our agenda as well as a Falcon. Yard sales, those are all um, end of April, early May. Um, our take a look at teaching club, we have um, bulletin boards ongoing. Um, this month will be mental health awareness, and then in the high school, we will have in a Falcons find from everywhere working board where. Students will color in their home country and we'll connect them back to the high school and their different languages around it. So it'll be really cool. And then last but not least, we have our interact club. They're doing the lasagna love again. And Falcon Family Research Center is going to help out with that.
Any questions written on our, on his report? Which is very informative, a lot of stuff going on. Everything not, not as impressive though as the ad libbing you did during the, you know, the intermission of the uh. Uh, that was a lot of fun. I guess this year's musical was phenomenal with you. I wanted to say last meeting because it was right, it brought up right up there, but. You guys all did great. It was really, really impressive and everything. So and and to thank, thank you, let me be part of it with the 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 intermission antics that you guys do. Alright, um, superintendent's report.
Mr. Samuel stole a little my thunder because at the last meeting when you were here writing, I um, complimented. That everybody in the musical and that the crew, the the musical performances were fantastic and. Not just because you're sitting here, your your performance in the one scene was just outstanding and fun and. You were great, so nice job, nice job. This past week, I had the opportunity with three of our other staff members to attend. Um, the nineteenth annual safe school seminar seminar, uh, historically, it's been held at UB. Um, this year it was actually held in Buffalo State University, our SRO. Um, and actually one of the other officers from Boston Police Department uh, also attended, which was fantastic. So we had really good representation from our area here, the um. Uh, the topics were obviously really important and timely. Um, what I always say in our safety meetings is that. Um, it's, you know, it's not time to look at safety issues afterwards, after the fact, right? So we spend a lot of time on it. Um, I think I've been going to this safety seminar for probably fourteen years now. Somewhere around there, maybe longer, ouch. Um, and um, every year you walk out with something. That you say, boy, maybe we could do that, or can we do this a little bit better? And um, so they certainly um. Widen your eyes to to do some things. I will say this, what's what's really awesome, and this has been. Over the past at least handful of years, I've felt this way. You have presenters who come in from all around the country. And when they talk about some of the plans and some of the 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 safety annexes. Um, that are that school districts need to move to and have as part of their um, safety plans. I always feel so good, because in New York State, those safety plans have been a part of what we do for a really long time. Um, and it is consistent from district to district. Um, the when they were talking about, um, they had an organization that was talking about some of these. These annexes like, you know, lockdown, lockout, evacuation. They were talking about as if it might be something new that we should all be, you know, doing, planning, practicing. We've been doing it. Um, and we, and I think the last meeting, I thanked. All of our local law enforcement agencies for the work that they do with us all the time. We done March seventeenth had the active shooter drill at high school, middle school. We couldn't be more fortunate with the level of response that we get. When the um, swatting incidents happened last week in three Western New York schools. Right after the first one had started and happened. I had a phone call from our SRO, from the chief of police. And from our liaison with the Niagara County Sheriff's Office, all within three minutes. Um, the 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 level of communication and collaboration um, is um, in 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 situations that you know are unnerving. They create a sense of calm um, for for certainly me in in this position. But I know the work that they do within our district, they create some of that calm for for the entire district. So um, thank you again to to all of our law enforcement providers, and we actually have our two SROs in the back here tonight. Um, so you know, you can, we we maybe we can thank them and thank all of them. So this swatting, if you haven't heard of it, um, it's when someone calls in or sends an email that is a hoax. It's false um, to put fear into people. Um, it's sad, it's too bad that people do this, think this way. Um, I will tell you this. Like any district in Western New York, if you get one of those calls. And they say that there's an active shooter in your building, um, you're you're going to respond and you're going to go into the practice. That you work on when it comes to active shooter drills, and you're going to go into lockdown immediately. And that's what Lockport did, and um, it didn't take long, thank goodness, for them to figure out that it was. Well, it was just swatting. But again, really sad, and if if you remember last year around this exact same time, there was a swatting incident in which they had. Put a threat out to really New York State and Western New York then specifically. One that happened, the person that they caught who did it wasn't even living on our side of order. It was some, and it wasn't a student, it was um, somebody who had been at high school for quite some time and was a Canadian citizen. So you know, obviously with the, we know the world's a much smaller place than it used to be with communication. And that that just makes it sadly so much easier for people to um, put fear into people who they'll never even see. So. Um, we we will continue to make it a habit when these things happen, we'll share them out. The most recent one that happened um, this week. Um, was a generic email that about fifty school districts in in New York State received. That that um, talked about a bomb. It wasn't specific um, to any school. Um, as a matter of fact, they put, you know, all of the email address so that everybody could see them. Um, and they were asking for money. So um, we we want to just continue to communicate that, we welcome, continue to communicate that. We will always work with our law enforcement partners to make decisions uh, in those situations as to. What level of um, response we need. Just as a reminder, next week, Wednesday, we have a board of education walkthroughs, uh, an agenda should have been sent to all of you. Uh, with where we're going that day, the lunch will actually be at Tuscaloosa School. And last, I think. Steve, you may have say, received the same email um, from Patrick Longo from NISBA. They'd like to come out in honor um, the the district, and in this case, more specifically, um, our boys hockey. Who uh, provided um, some service to this Western New York um, service dog training facility. And so um, I'd like, I'm gonna. Work with them. The team and Patrick Longo to get a time when they can come out and give a presentation to to the team. Um, I'd like to perhaps do it the same night that we're honoring our women athletes, because that means the hockey players will be here, so. Seems like that would work uh, pretty well together.
Any questions to superintendent in his report? Alright, um. Any items for board discussion? Any old business? Any new business? Oh, I'm just trying to skip Elson. It happens when I scroll that far past. Yeah.
Okay, again, almost every mission on the same this presentation multiple times, so we'll go for kind of quickly. Um, a few things that we point out is there going to be discussion items. First and foremost, uh, this year is the foundation aid almost of New York State. If you remember that number. That that's significant increase that you see in foundation aid. Made it so that going for next school year, every district in New York State will now be fully funded when it comes to foundation aid. Okay, and that's really, really important. We will finally be fully funded next year with foundation aid. So you can see that increase, that 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 explains the big jump from two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. Throughout the state.
What more? Good, it's not two hundred fifty million higher tax leaders set aside, is it?
It is.
Yeah, for state.
For the entire state. Yep, these are all the state statewide numbers. No, yep, absolutely. And and just just really quick, because you brought it up, um, the that high impact tutoring set aside. Both, both um, the senate and the assembly. Um, have. Um, put it in their education um, bill to remove the high impact tutoring as a set aside. So that hasn't been resolved, as most people maybe probably know, April tenth, it it the date for the budget has been extended to April tenth. So see what happens. And then in the in the bottom right hand corner where you see the foundation aid base, you can see um, there that our foundation aid increase. Is going up by one point nine million dollars for next year, and remember. Those dollars, almost all of them are dollars that we should have been receiving for years. Think of it that way, had they been fully funding foundation aid. And and also know that some school districts were being fully funded, so where our increase was significant for next year's budget. Assuming, you know, that goes through. That's not the case for all districts, some of them were a three percent increase because they were held harmless, because they've actually been fully funded. This in some cases for a pretty long time.
This is just going through again, the uh, executive budget proposal versus prior year enacted budget and the differences. And where the differences are for our district and those increases and or decreases, some of them. Uh, have decreased because it's based on student counts and uh, counts of students in. Like for example, public access high cost aids, those are kids that require specialized services, special education students. So so they're very volatile numbers. That's alright. This just again shows the calculated CPI for the forthcoming year, and you can see how it's jumped considerably. To eight percent. Um, again, just reviewing what a pilot is, it's another uh, payment in lieu of tax it stands for, and that's where. Um, the IDAs are usually uh, make an agreement with the uh, company or. Business to pull them off the tax rolls and in turn they're obligated usually in their contract to provide. Certain um, amounts of uh, employment in the in the area or other things. Uh, mostly it's employment, um, but it's another mechanism for the district to collect revenue. Um, they're they're as they're pulled off the uh, tax rolls, a separate agreement is made with them. And it's usually anywhere between ten and twenty years. It impacts the other taxpayers because they are pulled off the tax rolls so that they're not part of the assessed values. Where our levy is then spread over. But just reviewing that again. And again, here's our tax levy worksheet um, calculated. Uh, we ended up at two point one eight percent maximum with our levy plus exclusions. Uh, showing the levy to be thirty-six million, one hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars. This is a chart again that just shows the increase of the levy. Uh, percentage and dollar wise uh, over the years and it's. Uh, of the last two, three years has kind of leveled off somewhat, you can see that. Um, the increases have been under two percent for prior two years and just over two percent this year.
And you can see down at the bottom, it was for the seven years, one point seven. Um, you know, can I just really quick on this, um, so the the levy limit, um, which is two point one eight percent. I just, I just want to put into some perspective, so if you if you remember in our district last year. Um, there were a lot of things happening in society about some safety issues, right? And so uh, one of the things that we did, and we made this decision after the budget last year, was in place for this year. Um, to add our school security officers to our buildings. Okay, so we've had a, we've had our two SROs, but we put a school security officer. Um, arms or school security officer needs one of our elementary schools, and um, the the cost of that is probably about. Two hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, somewhere around there, and it's something that we didn't have in our budget. Okay, um, it's we we obviously with keeping expenditures down, found a way to pay for it, but as you've all seen and we've talked about. The the difference between what we're budgeting and what we're expending continues to narrow, and that's okay to a degree, but. That that expense that we built in for last year, we we all felt like, you know, it was a pretty important thing. We've obviously are keeping that into our budget moving forward, but just to give you an idea as to one of the things. Um, that that we did have as an added expense.
This is just again reviewing the teacher retirement system rate and where it is uh, projected for next year, which is nine point seven six percent. Slightly less than the current year. And the ERS rate, uh, the next slide. Is just going up slightly to thirteen point one percent from eleven point six. And just seen, uh, just to recap, those are the amounts of the employer share. So that we pay that percentage on on the total salaries of those folks included in those retirement systems. And again, this is a chart of showing uh, our budget analysis and our budget to budget difference. Percentage wise and the dollar amount of the budget year to year.
But if I could just point out in the bottom right hand corner, we're we're going to do a little bit more with this, but in order to make this budget work. You can see uh, what's being appropriated in that bottom right hand corner from the appropriate fund balance from some of our reserves. And we'll break that down a little bit more here in a second.
So our total expenditure budget is eighty-four million, four hundred seventy thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollars, our total revenues. Um, that we know are coming in. But what this does not take into account is what the legislature would approve once that budget comes through, so this is based on the executive budget. Is seventy-seven million, four hundred nine thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars, showing a difference of uh, seven million, sixty-one thousand, thirty-three dollars. That we need to fund to uh, make our expenditure budget. And these three uh, reserves, the capital transportation reserve, capital technology reserve, and the Greenway bond authority. Uh, bond power authority monies, those are uh, monies that directly offset expenditures that are in our budget. So if the expenditure goes away, that that revenue goes away.
And and just just to point out, so it was a little over seven million, you can see there, once you take off these particular reserves. You're now need to fund the four point nine million, okay?
So um, how how I budgeted to fund it is using a million dollars of our host community monies. Uh, five hundred thousand from workers compensation reserve, a hundred thousand from our employee benefits reserve, seven hundred thousand from ERS reserve. Five hundred thousand from TRS reserve in two point one million dollars, just over two point one million dollars from our appropriated fund balance. This is just showing um, where I expect or an estimated tax rates would go. Based on a two point one eight percent increase in the levy. Again, these numbers are only estimates, they are based on prior year assessed values. And uh, it's it changes year to year, so these are just totally based on prior year. And you can see um, the increase rate from one year to another and what the average. Uh, annual rate would be increase or decrease, and that's. That's on a house at a hundred thousand dollars with a basic star exemption based on the certified amounts from twenty-two, twenty-three. And this is just again reviewing where we are with reserves, so. At the end of twenty-two, twenty-three, if we were to use the of uh, the reserves that I've budgeted. The uh, numbers in blue would be where we would end up uh, at the end of the year. And the the green there is just also taking into account the new capital project and the amount that. Uh, the reserves would uh, fund that project. So it would reduce that two thousand seventeen capital reserve amount slightly, and it would reduce the uh, twenty-two. Two thousand twenty, uh, two thousand nineteen capital reserve would be completely gone. And the two thousand twenty-two capital reserve would also be uh, reduced down to just over two point four million.
So we we talked a little about the UPK program already, um, we were. A lot of additional slots, we have not filled all of our hundred and forty-one slots yet. But they've certainly added a significant number of slots, um, if we can fill them. One of the things that we continue to look at, um, there are ways if we could ever find a way to to transport. Because we know certainly some of our kids, that's uh, that and families, that's a really difficult thing to get them if there was transportation. We know there's some surveying that we've done that they would do it. We're we're looking at a number of possibilities still, we of course bring that all all to you, especially if there was any additional cost. Fiscal stress rating. The reason it's so high, um, uh, really our business office and the work of the board of education has done. Back when we were the most physically stressed district in New York State. A lot of pain here, there was a lot of difficulty here for a lot of people, and um, you can see where our fiscal stress rating is now. One of the reasons why it's almost impossible for our district to be at zero, and I say almost possible because you see a couple of years we are. But it's very difficult for us to be at zero. The only reason in those two years was because we got some additional payments during those years. So that our um, our cash flow was larger than it normally is. Our cash flow normally doesn't need what it costs us to cover the Tuscaloosa school. We get that money um, afterwards when we get reimbursements, so that looks like a liability to somebody who does that kind of work. So that looks like a liability to somebody who does that kind of work. And then electric school buses, you you know, this is all over the news all the time. Um there's significant concerns with it. Um I won't say anymore now, just that understand that by twenty twenty-seven, we're expected to start purchasing electric buses and by twenty thirty-five, as it stands right now, we're expected to have our entire fleet turned over. Lot of issues with that. We've talked about it before, but I won't do that today. Any questions?
Can you go back to the slide where uh good breakdown of calculating this year tax levy? I just want to see the line of the pilot agreements that are there.
This one?
Revenue right there. That shows the pilots there. Payment move tax collection is one point eight.
Right, so if you go back to where we have to calculate what the tax levy is on that one? So okay, yes, if you're in base your pilots, so is that what we would normally be bringing in the pilots each year?
Base your pilots is the current year. In the the pilot receivable, actually, I have the wrong date on there. Pilot receivable would be next year is the one point eight is what we expect to bring in next year. But this year, the base year is one point seven, six, 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 nine.
So is is that, but is that when we when we put that on there that way, that would be like, we're not really taking it right now.
No, we're taking it in because it's based on the contracts. We have those pilot agreements, but it fluctuates because there's always new pilots coming on. There's pilots falling off. The um pilots are recalculated every year. So the formulas add in things as you move along in it in one of the contracts. Like it adds a certain percent more that they're taxed or taxed on, calculated on.
And and the idea, right, is that the an individual business who agrees to move into the area is given a deal to move into the area. This is very common. As as a matter of fact, you know, in New York State, it's one of the things that, you know, people complain about that you don't have. There's not enough, right? Then there's not enough incentive for businesses to stay. One of the, one of the incentives is certainly the pilot. The the issue that comes is that the amount of money that a school district could be raising if a pilot wasn't given where they were only paying a percentage, they're only paying a percentage as business of what they would if they were fully on the rolls. That's the, whatever that number is, that's the money that you would calculate as being lost as far as the district's concerned, is a revenue. Any other questions?
So um we've had, we have in process several tax assessment challenges. Um one of the biggest ones that we've received is for Summit Park Mall. There are, oh, sorry. Um one of the biggest tax challenges that has come up is for Summit Park Mall. And it involves um quite a number of properties. This was like in last year we got it. So they're challenging uh the twenty-one, twenty-two year forward. They're asking for quite a reduction um from basically a final assessed value of one point two five seven. They're asking, requesting it be lower to under five hundred thousand. So it's a difference of about seven hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars in taxable assessed property value. The county town and the school district, our attorneys are all working on it and they uh have requested that all three of us go in on an outside vendor to do an assessment of the mall so that um it's um so it's not lower to this amount, basically. They're asking if we would split the cost of that assess assessment, which is in total uh eight thousand dollars. And they're asking if the district would split in in pay approximately two thousand seven hundred dollars of that reassessment. Or not reassessment, actually the assessment so that um they can look at it fairly through the lens of an actual assessor.
I have no problem with that.
Um if we don't do that, then it's um probably harder to point, I guess, it's they're looking for some ground to to work from to say, no, we don't want you to uh reduce the assessment that much. Like we feel the land is more valuable than that. I mean, the other thing is they're just taking it to court and the judge is deciding this way, there's something at least backing the um proposal to not reduce it that far. So for last year, twenty-one, twenty-two, because that's when they wanted to start doing this. We actually uh the calculated tax was uh forty-six thousand, six hundred seventy-nine dollars, seventy-six cents for all the properties. They're asking to reduce it to under twenty thousand, which would be a difference of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars. So if that same application would apply this year, in other words, if the assessments haven't changed and I apply the same um principle with our tax rate this year, it would be another, a loss of another almost twenty-nine thousand dollars this year. So together, you know, would be quite a bit, fifty-seven thousand dollars in revenues.
We were talking about your Twitter feed and what you've been posting.
Alison, could you could you just repeat that again? Yes. Oh, no, no, it's an important one. Yeah.
Okay, so we received the tax assessment challenge from Summit Park Mall last year. And there's quite a number of properties that they're uh challenging the assessment on. And the county town and our, as well as our attorneys have talked about it. And um they want to get an outside opinion of the value of the properties. So they were looking to hire an outside contractor to do that. And they wanted to split the cost basically three ways, which would be approximately twenty-seven hundred dollars for the school district. And they were wondering if we were willing to pay that to have this outside assessment done.
I would assume the outside assessment wouldn't do nothing to help us.
Well, I think the point of it is they're trying to get, they feel like the values are much more than what they want to reduce by. So the owners are looking to reduce the property from one million, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred fifty dollars to four hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, which is like seven hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars difference. So they're, the attorneys um and the assessors apparently feel like that's way too low. So they're looking to get some outside person to assess it, to see where it would come in.
My, just one thought is this, that, you know, the dollars that I think Alison mentioned twenty-eight thousand and twenty-nine thousand. And then, you know, you gotta look at this into the future too, like how many years you do this once? How many years is that going to apply to if 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 it's even halfway, right? If that savings, if that difference is seven hundred fifty thousand and they meet, it's it's somewhere in the middle, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, it's it's significant. So and and if I guess if the if the assessors say, hey, they think this is way too low, that certainly gives me some some pause to say if they think it's really low and way too low, then we probably should do. That's my.
Rick, thought?
Yeah, so so the question, are we willing to spend twenty-seven hundred to get at the issue here? They're gonna argue about twenty-seven hundred. I just don't understand why they're not paying, but I don't have a problem with twenty-seven.
Well, I mean, they're they're splitting it three ways.
Yeah.
In a sense, because we, you know, part of the assessment, obviously, the tax has come to us. So they're just looking off for the all taxing entities to to split it evenly. So, I mean, that, granted, it's only a year out. I I mean, we had that one that was going back fifteen years that they were challenging, and that was, you know, the amount that we were going to lose or have to pay back to them was ridiculous over that time period, but um you know, I don't want to see this get to that because we know how long this could possibly play out also. And um we saw where that building went down to zero. You know, through the assessment, I don't think this would go to zero because of the Atlanta's there, but still, you could you could have a judge come in here and say, oh, yes, two hundred thousand dollars, see what the value that is.
If our assessors find that it's lower, they don't think it's worth as much. So if if we send assessors in, they don't think it's worth as much. Is that even a possibility or not?
Sure. Sure.
Will we have to close that?
That's what this is.
No, what he's saying is that person we hire, if they go in there and say, oh, it's it's worth less than what?
But I'm assuming that they're betting that's not gonna happen.
I'm sure the town is probably ha- has a a set of an independent assessor on the roll. They also have an independent assessor that they've used for other disputes like this too.
But 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 Jason, to your point, it could, it could happen, right? It could happen. And and I don't know that you couldn't disclose or, and the reality is, once you go public that you're going to do it and you're you're bringing the person in, you're spending the money on it. If you don't report it, guess what they're gonna do? They're gonna go get it, go get it assessed. So sure.
Yeah, the baseball thing's still in there. There's a haunted house thing or whatever that's in their area too. But they were supposed to do other sports things in there and it hasn't, hasn't moved at all. I sat in on a couple of those meetings because they were doing with the, with the, you know, NWA A um looking for us to partner with them, but it you know, that was a couple of years ago. All right, um I think that we find, I I'll call for a motion to expend twenty-seven hundred dollars for the purpose of um uh hiring the independent assessor for that property. Is there a second? It's seconded uh for discussion. All those in favor, then please say aye. Aye. Pause your standing. Carrie's. Okay, now that I blew through the rest of the agenda, yeah, is there anything that we need to talk about with board discussion, old business or new business? Ricky, are you good with anything? You have anything?
Just, I seen, I mean, I didn't even get a chance to look at it. Did you already talk about that?
The email?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't look at it, nothing in reading.
Yeah, Dan and I are gonna address it with uh the the reporter. The reporter.
You're talking about the email or the text? So so, so that, so that, okay, so, so just to be, so everybody's not wondering, right? The the email, the 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 email had to do with the the IDA pilots, you know, this information that we were just talking about. Text uh question was about um some additional information that I'll bring to the next meeting on the field trip.
If there's uh any public comments? Open mic night. Okay. All right, then, um I'll call for motion to adjourn. Moving second, although it was in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pause your standing. We're adjourned.